Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee of Whole Meeting. Today is Monday, excuse me, it's Tuesday, July 6, 2021. I'm reading off the top of my agenda that says we have no Committee of the Whole Meeting on Monday in observance of Independence Day. Somehow, I messed that up. But it is Tuesday. It's about 6:15 or a little couple of seconds thereafter. We're going to go through our agenda this evening for the Committee of the Whole, followed by our 7 o'clock typical meeting. That will be our City Council meeting. We have four consent agenda items that we're going to go through with our Committee Development Director, Mark Hunt. Mark, you have the floor. Talk to us first about Consent R., and you can walk through them however you'd like.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Let me just get to my correct screen here, and we'll go over that item. So Consent Item R. is a project brought by Kevin Kilner and Build to Suit. At the TBK Sports Complex, this is a 3.4 acre lot, Zone C3, proposed for three buildings of commercial in nature. I think two of them are spec, one they do have a company that's going to come in and occupy the building. This is a private drive providing access to those lots, but we have worked out an arrangement with Mr. Kilner to have a 10-foot trail put in as a private amenity at first, but eventually will become a city trail with some plans we have for future connectivity to the north. Again, Zone C3, this is an allowed use. Had a positive staff report at P&amp;Z on the 16th of June, and also was recommended 5-0 to this body for approval. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Looks like the elevations and drawings are very similar to that which is out there that Kevin's already built with his friends at Build to Suit. Anybody have questions? Kind of exactly what we were hoping might happen, more development. Fantastic. All right, then I'd entertain a motion that this remain on tonight's agenda as Consent Item R.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Nauman, did you have any questions about this one? I would say no.
I do not, Your Honor.
Chime in if you have a question about something. That way, we'll have more of a dialogue here. You're the only one that's not here in person, so that'll work out just fine. All right, let's move to Consent Item S.
Thank you.
Yeah, Consent Item S., Mayor, is brought to us by CW Iowa, also known as The Tangled Wood Restaurant. This is a site plan update, so this company obviously has been in town for several years and operating. They are adding some amenities to their overall outdoor patio, and because of that, it's created a more than 10% improvement, which requires new site plan. In doing this, we had them go ahead and include and highlight other amenities that have been added that were maybe more smaller along the way, but just to get them all in front of you. So this really does add specifically an outdoor kitchen service area and a container bar. Also should note that a pavilion was added some time ago, and they're seeking your approval on everything you see here, just to kind of update their overall site plan. 4.17 acres, C1 neighborhood, commercial district, an allowed use. It's a well-attended facility. It's well-parked. Additional parking was added in the past couple of years just to the west here. Had a positive staff report on June 16th, and was recommended to this body by a 5-0 margin by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would be happy to answer questions that you might have.
Questions for Mark on The Tangled Wood, cleaning up some stuff. Yes, Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question about noise. I mean, while this is a zone commercial, just across Tangled Wood Road there is housing, and so I've got some questions about noise. Are they going to plant some trees as a noise barrier? Or, I guess, I would expect that they would plant trees, and are they meeting landscaping requirements?
Yeah, they're meeting or exceeding the landscaping requirement already. There's the lots heavily wooded, heavily treed. When you start giving credit for everything you see on the screen here, and there's quite a lot, they do meet their landscaping requirement. I will, I can report honestly that the noise complaints I've had, I've received, I've never actually received one on this property personally. I know there's been some talk, maybe to the council or others, but never received by my office. And they do have a 7 to 10 o'clock noise ordinance. There are other amenities in the area that offer, that also have outdoor gatherings that have a similar volume within a mile radius.
Decker, you know that we've talked about this, we've also checked the decibel levels. Go ahead.
And, Your Honor, just recently Craig informed us, Craig and Drew were down as we were getting briefed on this. They put in some pretty sizable trees along Tangled Wood and along the backside. So for those of you that might go up there from time to time, get a look at the new, pretty substantial trees that they got. And I think it's changing the landscape, literally, if I can use that, favorably. And we have talked about, with him, about noise complaints, and he's well aware of that, and will continue to work at that.
You know, because I bring it up, while we have the apartments across the street, which don't face there, just down the street, we've got two developments, new developments. Windmiller's putting one in, Dolan's putting one in, of single-family housing. So I know that there are going to be residential in the neighborhood. Now hopefully, the buyer is, buyer beware when you buy it, know that this noise is there, but...
And I think when we've looked before, correct me if I'm wrong, if Chief, you may know, or anybody else, and done the decibel readings, they're following the ordinance. Does anybody chime in on that? Jeff, did you, or anybody?
Mayor and City Council, over the years, we have had a few noise complaints up at that address specifically when they've had bans. And we've tried, we have worked with them, keeping that dialogue, and also if we go up to take a decibel reading, then if it is above, we ask, they do turn it down, and they've been compliant and been real good to work with. So there have been a few occasions, but we've always dealt with it, and they've worked with us on that.
Okay, perfect. Anything else to add? Any other questions? Right, I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tonight's agenda as Consent S., as in Sam.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move to Consent Item T., another site development plan.
For this one, I'm actually going to use one of the maps that's included in your packet, because it's just a lot easier to illustrate with an aerial underneath it. So bear with me here while I bring up a little bit better drawing for you. So this, I think, maybe triangular-shaped property would be the best way to describe it, is an I-2 property. It's already one-quarter, one-half roughly developed, kind of this northeastern point of the triangle is used for RV and boat storage. The petitioner would like to expand their use to include all of the, all of the property to the southwest. They do have to pull a floodplain permit, but they've already worked on raising the site. Staff reviewed this, saw no problems. They will have to do some screening. We're going to waive any landscape requirement for the fact that they would have to screen with a fencing and some type of mesh fabric on the fence that stores what they do typically anyway on their existing portion. It was received positively by staff, and it did have a 5-0 margin in favor vote on June 16th from the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions on this down in the industrial park? All right, seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tonight's agenda as Consent Item T. is in town.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That also has unanimously passed, at least stay on our consent for the evening. We move to Consent Item U., another site development plan. We like these, everybody taking a chance and building.
Yeah, yeah. So we have Windmiller Design bringing out a project in here. This is Lot 7 of the Woodlands, 4275 Ontario Drive is the address. You might be familiar, we have some condos to the, to the west here, or proposed condos to the west on Pandit Drive that came through this body, oh, probably a year or so ago. It's a C1 neighborhood commercial area. This particular lot's 1.5 acres. This site is interesting, or this development is interesting, that it will have some private storage slash garage parking underneath it that is for the use, the user only. It's a financial services office, so there won't be patrons parking there, but they will have some parking underneath. I might be able to find you an elevation that shows that here. A pretty low intense use, they have plenty of parking, they've also got additional private parking, which is a little bit unique to this. Staff did have a positive report, and it was approved 5-0 on June 16th by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions here? Yes, Bill.
In reading the council minutes, I understand there was a concern from a neighbor over in the condos about noise.
Yeah.
What type of noise was he concerned about?
I think it was more just traffic and lights, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did talk with them, and so did the owner afterward. In fact, I followed up, I'm sorry, so did the engineer afterward. I followed up with the engineer today. What they're going to do is they're going to use their tree factors and overload on the west side over here, so there's a little more buffer between that home and that residence, or between this development and that residence, and the individual is very satisfied with that solution.
Thank you. This is a single-use financial services building.
Yes, sir, with the, with the slightly unique, you know, private parking underneath, that's just his own.
Powell did that, too.
Yeah.
And that...
But there will not be a lot of noise.
I've been out of that every day, that's where...
No, no, it may be more headlights, yeah.
A boat, or stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
His office is currently next to mine. There's maybe one person in the parking lot at a time.
Yeah.
He gets very little, his current office.
Well, even if, you know, financial services, it's probably an eight-to-five-ish kind of a thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think talking with, talking with the homeowner and the engineer afterward, things were resolved.
I don't have any...
In the hallway after meeting.
Conversations, but...
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tonight's agenda as Consent Item U.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up tonight as Consent U. Are there any remaining consent items any council member would like to discuss at this time? Yes, Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item V., the resolution for floodzone properties appraisal. I guess I'm concerned that right now, housing prices seem to be at a very, very high price, and buying out houses to demolish them, I'm not sure that's a good use of our taxpayer money. I drive through the area, a lot of those houses are getting new roofs and new siding. I know that's insurance company, but in fact, they're keeping the properties up. I've received zero complaints from the residents in my ward about insurance cost or unable to, unable to sell our properties. So demolishing, demolishing houses that therefore subtracts from the tax base, I got some questions about that.
Mr. Plaine, will you bring us up to speed on where we are vis-à-vis this particular project and process through the federal money grant that we received?
Well, this, Your Honor, would be the, I guess, second or third phase. I would call it the transition of the second to third phase, that we talked with you about back when we were finishing up the second phase monies, and we got an indication from the state that there would be additional monies available to us if we were to consider proceeding, and it was our recommendation to you that we at least proceed through this phase so that we could create the public space, perhaps for a future park. So as you know, we've been a little sporadic in some of the acquisitions, because we originally went off of a list of those interested, and we weren't seeking necessarily contingent properties. We were just trying to get as many as we could get during that first round. Once we got the first round done, and the second round went in, we were able to get a little more succinct in our target area, and we've, in our conversations with the folks at the state, we can, in particular with this next round, target exactly the properties that would give us the space that we think the council would have, or the citizens would have, to make usable for the likelihood of a park area. So we know that there are some council members who would say at that point, maybe we should discontinue our efforts, but we believe that this round, particularly since the state encouraged us to go, would allow us to then seek the contingent properties that would give us a strategic opportunity to create the public space that we think needs to be done in order to get a finished product that both, I guess, takes care of what the original intention of the council was when we started this, and then probably creates the, at least a public space, and finishes off an area that, that gives us the ability to then discontinue with some sense of normalcy down there. Would be the way that I would describe it. So we would...
So finish where we're at, and then let's reevaluate.
I think that was, that definitely was our thought when we recommended this to you. As we said when that happened, we got encouraged by the state that there were additional dollars either from the derecho or other disasters that got classified as available to us. So that's why we took advantage of this particular round, and we would recommend that we at least continue this phase, and then if there's, if there's another offering to come, I think, to the point Mr. Saxer, and I think Mr. Connors and others have said, is perhaps we want to, at that point, reevaluate how we move forward.
While we're on the topic and the questions raised by Jerry, go ahead.
And if I'm, if I'm wrong in any of that, I would encourage Mark to, to say that I was wrong, or anybody else that tells me that I'm making a bad statement.
Feel free, I'm encouraging you now.
I don't think anything was incorrect. The only thing I would add, though, is that to actually make application to the grant, we have to perform the appraisals first. So those appraisals are something that has to be done. This is very unique. Most grants, you don't do the work before you get the money. We actually have to have the appraisals done so we could submit a grant application. If we choose not to do those appraisals, then we are choosing not to apply for the grant.
Right.
If we are awarded grant funds, 85% of that dollar amount is refundable to the city through the grant, and so roughly $800 is what is at risk here for the council if we were to do 20 appraisals, at $275 apiece.
And just before we get to Bill, based on the stuff that Jerry raised, so I can keep it straight in my mind, he also talked about not getting complaints about the flood insurance. Nothing has changed with bigger waters, to my knowledge, and those rates still go up annually.
Yeah.
But they didn't take as big of a hop last year, because they went up about 100% then like 500%.
And what's unique about this opportunity...
Again, 500, but they didn't go up quite that much this time.
That's correct. And then, but what's unique about this opportunity is that we do not have to seek homes that have FEMA flood insurance. We just have to seek homes that are in the area. This is, this is state money, not FEMA money, I guess is how I would describe it.
Yeah.
And because of that, it allows us to square off areas. Before, we had a technical term, Swiss cheese effect, if you will, because we had to only pick homes that were under the FEMA flood insurance regime. Now, if it's private flood insurance, they're eligible, and that lets us square off area to make contiguous ground.
To Decker's point, create...
Yes, sir.
Critical mass to do something with instead of...
And then we're only submitting...
A house on an island.
That's correct, sir. And then we're only submitting a targeted area that's contiguous to other existing buyouts to try and make a squared-off area again. So if somebody's out in left field, they're not going to be able to come in. They've got to be next to one of our previous areas that we've bought out.
And we like that. Good. Okay, Bill, sorry, go ahead.
If we do these appraisals, are we tied into following through on each and every one of them, or can we scale back based on the amount of money it's going to take to purchase these houses?
I think we want to do at least 11, because I have 11 occupant, or 11 homeowners that are interested and are in the target area. I mean, I don't know how to answer that question besides, we ought to do the...
Well, my number question was basically related to how much money the city's going to give.
Yeah, we could do up to 20, I think, if you award it.
If we do 20, we're not going to be tied into having to finance 20 of these things. Is that correct?
No, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
I think for sure we want to do 11.
Pick and choose after the appraisals.
Yeah. We're going to pick and choose at the time of appraisal. I'm not going to appraise anything that's not in our target area or on our stacked list, if that makes sense.
But, Mark... I think you missed the point. You say you've got 20 houses that are in this, this round of buyouts. So I want to make sure that as a council member, I have the ability to look at where the numbers on these appraisals come in and say, okay, we're only going to take 10.
Sure, yeah.
We're going to take 12. We're not tied into, just because we did an appraisal, having to follow through on a purchase.
That's correct. You're not, you're not tied into it.
Other questions? Just Jerry.
So can we, since it's not FEMA money, it's state money, can we change the rules? And the specific rule I'm looking for is can we make an offer to the homeowner and say, okay, we came in with an appraisal of $150,000, here you go, you can take it or leave it. And I'm referring to the last round, we had one homeowner come in and say, oh, I need $40,000 more. And we paid him, because he found an appraiser that would give him a high appraisal.
I don't know this program, but I...
I don't think we have a lot of latitude within the rules of the program. Those are what they are, and then by grant contract, we're going to have to follow them. So if there's a way to deal and try and get a lower amount, I don't know of that. That's why we have to do the appraisal.
But I think, to the point that Bill asked, we don't have to, we can reject the offer if they, if we make the appraisal, we make the offer, and they don't accept the offer, we can, at that point, we can stop.
Yeah.
We don't have to, we don't have to counter the offer.
Okay.
But to the point we did the last time was, our thought was, if it was a strategic property, we might want to consider that. But we don't have to do that. So if, if the offers get crazy, we walk away and, and we're done.
Anything else on V.? Anything else on consent? Any particular council member wants to discuss at this time? Yes, Scott Webster.
I only have, I only have one, one recommendation on Item E. We're getting more GIS licenses. We need to think about getting better computers for those. As a customer, as a consumer, I'm talking at this point in time, those things are slower, and Bill's been there. Those things need to, like, we're going to have more computers there. You try to pull up a GIS as a contractor, or somebody trying to develop in our town, you could be in there for 15 minutes trying to get that thing to pull up, because you're trying to pull up all the documents. So it's just a suggestion. I'm surely not in that committee, but those...
We rarely, we rarely get council members who want us to spend more money, so we'll take it, we'll take quite the advantage of that comment, Your Honor.
I did see that that's $38,000 a license.
They're expensive.
Yes.
Yes. Costs $38,000 to wait for the dang thing to come up, because our computers are slow. It will help your staff time move much quicker.
That's our hope.
Yes, Jerry, in Mark's office.
Thank you, Your Honor. Being we've got time, I have one more item, Item N. Our friend, our old friend Stafford Creek. Could we get an update on what that's going to involve here? You know, I thought we got burned on Stafford Creek once, I'd want to be burned a second time.
Yeah, I'll be glad to update you, council member, on that one. We actually have city infrastructure that's caving in and actually causing a larger issue in this area. So this is actually going in and just fixing the city infrastructure in these targeted locations.
And we do have permission from the property owners that are adjacent to it to allow us to come onto the, their properties, and we're going to actually create a mini detention area on one property next to it that the homeowners agreed to. So this is fixing two storm sewers that are, have fallen, they've caved into them and are jeopardizing our sanitary sewer that's in the middle of the creek. And we've gotten permission from all those that are affected to allow us to be there.
Okay, so I'm glad to hear we got permission.
That's the Tangle, Tangled Wood Court, right? Yes, sir. Yeah, that's where you and I met out there.
We did not.
Thank you.
There's no money. We did not offer any money for us to go in and, and pay for that. This has all been given by the property owners and, and donating the land for the little detention area, frankly.
Correct. Thank you. Any other questions on consent items for this evening? And I'd like to entertain a motion to approve for our consideration at the City Council meeting at 7 o'clock, the entire consent agenda.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take up our consent agenda as written. Thank you. Does any particular council person have any questions on our operational agenda, or any comments or questions there? Yes, Greg.
Nothing, just to, nothing on this, but I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm bringing this up again. Field Psych Road, the new construction, the horseshoe, west and east, I forget the name of the street again. East, uh...
North of 53rd, south of...
Across from Field Psych Park.
Yep.
Well, whatever. The, the twoplexes that they're putting in, the ones that are now going in now that are closest to Field Psych, the elevation of the back of the home downstairs is zero, and the, and the top of the creek, the creek, top of the creek is, if that's zero, the house is zero. There is absolutely no elevation. If the water goes over the creek, which it does from time to time, it can't help but get into those houses. I thought we had, I thought we had emphasized not to put, let these people build property, the homes, near creeks.
I believe that that particular subdivision that you're referring to actually went in prior to us approving the amended stormwater ordinance, but yet I work with Mr. Hunt and his department and my staff to double-check the elevations.
Well, just, you guys are next to school, just go look at it.
Be glad to.
Okay.
Well, but I do think those, all of those are two feet above the 100-year floodplain. They had to be. That's our ordinance.
Correct.
So they're two feet above the 100-year floodplain.
There's a creek.
I'm just telling you, Greg, they have to be two feet above the 100-year floodplain.
Just take, take a look.
Yeah, we'll be glad to.
Just, you give me your opinion, what you think.
That's the ordinance.
Okay. Crazy.
And they, I mean, they put fill in there as well to make that happen.
It's all fill.
Yeah.
Anything else on our agenda this evening? All right. Any items to be added to the agenda for this evening from council? I have none. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
You stand adjourned? Good work. We start again here in 18 minutes. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 6, 2021 at 7 o'clock. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Connors?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Saxer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Webster?
Here.
Fantastic, thank you all for joining us. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join me in the pledge of allegiance, which will be followed by an invocation given by Bettendorf Police and Fire Chaplain, Pastor of Asbury Methodist, United Methodist Church, Pastor Tom Carver.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Tom, thanks for joining us this evening.
Just a word, first of all, to the mayor, the city, all the staff, we just celebrated the Fourth of July, and a return after the absence last year. But I thought in our, my remarks today, just to remember the Declaration of Independence, and also quote how it was also a declaration of dependence. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thomas Jefferson concluded that document with a declaration of dependence, that the only way we could survive as a nation is to pledge ourselves to each other and be dependent only way we could survive as a nation is to pledge ourselves to each other and be dependent upon one another in a community, as neighbors, as friends, as cities. And so he concluded those words. And for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. Would you pray with me? Gracious God, we do look to you for guidance, for protection, as we enjoy the liberties and the freedom, the independence of this nation. May we also be aware of the complete dependence we have on you and on each other to make this a good life, to share our neighborhood, our community, and to serve one another. And so we renew today that pledge to each other mutually, our sacred lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Tom. Wonderful to see you. All right. Public requests of council. I know there's a bunch of here, of you here that want to talk about the Dolan development on the Bettendorf-Davenport border. We're gonna see if there's anybody here first who wants to be heard on an item that's on tonight's agenda, not set for public hearing. So at public requests of council, we encourage you to speak on an item that's on tonight's agenda, but not set for a public hearing. So if there's anybody here tonight who wishes to be talked, to be heard about something that we're gonna talk about tonight on our agenda, let's hear from you first, and then we'll move into the group that's here to talk about the Dolan project. Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard on an item that's not set for public hearing, but it is up for consideration this evening? Okay, let's move to anybody else who wishes to be heard on public requests of council. You can be heard by approaching the podium. Please state your name and your address. Hold your comments to two minutes or so if you can. And let's not be repetitious. Looks like we've got fifteen, maybe twenty, people here that might be on that issue. If we all feel the same way and have a spokesperson or two, that might be good for us. I think I've shared with you that this is a project not under consideration by the City of Bettendorf yet, despite what has happened in Davenport. We have a Development Review Committee, and this is on its agenda for Thursday. That's the first step in our process. It'll end up at plan and zone, and then it'll end up before us. So council hasn't seen this project, and probably every department head save, community development, has not seen this project. So there won't be any real response to anything you have to say, but we'd love to hear from you. So please approach the podium in the back, state your name and address, and we'll get started.
Hello, I'm Amy McClure Swarengen. I live at sixteen River View Park Drive. I just personally want to thank the trash people, collectors, and the recyclers to come, that came back to our neighborhood after the confusion. So I really appreciate the city getting on board and helping us all out, making sure our trash and our recycling got picked up today. So thank you for that. I want you, I, we had posted something on the Nextdoor app, and someone said something about a NIMBY. Do you guys know what a NIMBY is?
Of course we do.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know! I had to look it up in Urban Dictionary. I was like, huh. Well, I will admit, when I saw this acronym on the post, I actually had to look it up. The person, the people are using it are usually referring to someone else, and it's because they personally have not been able to see the impact or nor live with it, much like the sideline quarterbacks that we hear on our couches on the, in our homes on Saturday afternoon, watching Iowa football full of advice, but not taking the tackles personally. I speak for myself and many others that do not oppose a development or change, or really, truly not NIMBYs. We understand that the City of Bettendorf, like many other cities, are growing. With growth comes growing pains. Yet tonight, we want to come forward in front of you, like many of other constituents, with the same concerns and similar, similar situations with R three and PUD zoning that have happened recently, with developments by McNamara, Witten Miller, and Dolan off Tanglewood and Tanglefoot Lane and Middle, Crow Creek Road and Fifty-third, Fifty-third, and the Applestone Homes, on Homes and Six. We've heard from Mr. Dolan, along with other developers, that they say they've met minimum requirements. It seems that developers come back with very few changes and the projects move forward, saying codes were followed, leaving constituents frustrated and not heard by the city government. If the same conversation and conversations are happening repeatedly, perhaps this is the time to come to, for the council to work with city staff and administration to look at the codes and raise the minimum requirements. We also realize increasing the tax base helps support our city budget. However, when these past projects, much like the new proposed Dolan cottages, McConlon Heights, which by the way is in Davenport, not Bettendorf, our hope is that the City Bettendorf staff will be able to articulate to P and Z, city council, and more importantly to the constituents in the weeks to come, of some of the following costs and concerns to the city and taxpayers. How exactly does a questionable grid and the topography of that land be resolved? This is a property that is a natural drainage way for all homes surrounding the property in Bettendorf and Davenport. How does this work with adjoining the land in Davenport? Do we continue our relationship and our working relationship with the City of Davenport with these concerns? Are we making sure that we're not exposing us to possible future litigation of the City of Davenport or residents that surround that area with drainage questions going back into the existing ravine? Infrastructure, existing and old. We've heard about how they're going to bring it in, and there'll be a detention pond. But how are we gonna deal with the existing infrastructure with the stormwater? And we live in an older neighborhood, and I'm, I will be honest, I'm not sure where we are with our updates down there. I know manor condos, has existing issues have been, need to be addressed, and what will be the impact on theirs? And will, will that warrant future dollars for us as a city? Undersized lot with high density of homes. There's a lot of homes going in this very small area. Applestone Homes put, had seven acres, they're putting twenty-one homes. This is five acres with twenty-six homes. Now, they're going to say that they're connected or they're duplexes, but, you know, we haven't seen the plans, and that is tomorrow night. So we're not even sure how tall these will be, how widespread, but it's still a high density and an undersized lot. I could go on, but I think there's other people that want to share. I won't even get into the traffic. I will let the others enjoy that conversation on the corner of a very narrow residential road on Lincoln. But again, we always appreciate the time and opportunity for, to be given the opportunity to speak in a public venue, so city staff can, when they meet together on that Thursday to discuss this. These are some of our concerns. I know Mark Hunt has been receptive. I have sent questions and concerns that we have collected from the Davenport P and Z and from other emails. So we just appreciate your time. We understand that no decision will be decided tonight, but hoping a concerted effort will be made by the City of Bettendorf to reexamine codes that balances the needs of existing neighborhoods and neighbors. Just because you can doesn't mean it's always a good idea. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Good to see you. Anybody else wish to be heard?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Libbet Brook. I live at seventeen twenty-six Broad Lawn in Davenport, and I would like to thank the council for allowing us to come, even though I am not a resident of Bettendorf. When we, some of us were in front of the Davenport council, I had two questions. I'm going to put one of those to you, even though, as I understand it, you do not know the particulars of the original plan or the, the plan that has yet to come, come back, which just includes Bettendorf. My question was, in the, how many years? Sixty? Sixty years that the houses in far east Davenport have been there, and probably how many years since Slaven's Manor was built? Fifty years? I, I really don't know. I'm, I'm old enough that I should know this, but I don't. So my question is, in all these years, has anybody come forward and said, wow, this is a great place for a development? This is a wonderful place to put, you know, a bunch of houses together and, and dump some traffic into places where we really don't want it dumped into? And, and I think probably the answer is no. No one, very few, if any, have come forward and said, this is a great place to have a development. So again, as, as Amy said, just because it can be done, which I question, doesn't mean it's a good idea. And thank you again for letting us speak.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Brook. Anyone else wish to be heard on this item? Or any other? Please.
Hello. My name is Anne Hochhausen, and I live at thirteen fifty Crestline Court in Bettendorf. My concerns are that this is old woods area that has a lot of wildlife, trees. I understand that the topography is really pretty steep, I mean ravine-like and that sort of thing. It seems to me it presents a lot of issues with building and then getting buildings to stay where you put them, instead of just slide off the hill or, or whatever. I realize that's not the city's issue, but nevertheless, the city's gonna put in a lot of money to, for sewer, water, roads, and that sort of thing. And for, I moved here, retired from the Army in, in, ten years ago, moved here, and for those ten years, I've called in most every year and said, do you think somebody could come out and look at the pavement on Crestline Court? Because it's, it's really crumbling and rotten. And, and they say, yeah, we'll get to that. But the time and the money, I know, are issues. So how do we come up with the, the time, the money, and effort to go into a new development like this that's gonna be really complex and, and, yeah, present just a lot of issues with drainage and that sort of thing? So those are my concerns. I think, I think a lot of energy and effort should go into repairing old roads and infrastructure before we take on something like this.
Thank you, Anne, and thank you very much for your service. Who else wishes to be heard?
My name is Gail Hoff, and I live in the manor condominiums. We've lived there for fifteen years. If you've ever driven past our complex, you know it's a large eleven-building complex. I live at the northernmost part, and so we enjoy the woods on a regular basis, between the deer and the raccoon and the occasional turkey. And anyway, you get the idea that there's a lot, a lot of wildlife there. We're very concerned about the drainage, because right now, our condo complex sits below the hill of where this building is going to take place. And we've been told by different people that the land would be raised, filled in, it would be much higher elevation than where we live now. And we're very concerned about water runoff getting into our basements, getting into our condos, because there is nothing to stop it. Also, at the end of our building, there is a piece of land that does not belong to us. It belongs to the previous owners, if it no law, if it, unless it belongs to Dan Dolan now, I don't know. But for the last sixty years, we have maintained that land through an agreement with the owners. We have mowed it, we have had gardens on it, we take care of it on a weekly basis. And so for us to all of a sudden lose that land, we have about ten feet from the end of our condo complex. And from the original plan, it looked like that's right where the water detention pond was going to be. And so the last thing we want to do is look out our windows and see either a lake or a river or who knows what happening right there. So please take a close look at the plans and think about the elevation that will be caused due to this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
I'm Carol Ryan. I live at thirty-four thirty-two Crestline Drive in Davenport. I'm the second house in the dead end. And originally, this was to include the whole area behind my house, and a street would go through, Crestline would go through. I understand that's off the table now, I'm not sure if it really is or not. But one of my concerns is what they'll do with, where the street comes, the Davenport Street ends, it's just a sheer drop-off there that goes down. The house next to me only has about this much straight, and that goes straight down. So I'm, I'm worried about that whole thing, how they're gonna build that up. And I think it will be, go way down to the manor like that. I am also just here to support the rest of the neighborhood. That whole wooded area, I've lived there for forty-five years, and it's also, it's always served as a buffer between a nice quiet residential area and Kimberly Road. And it's just, I hate to see it go. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
My name is Paula Teal, and I live at thirty-nine River View Park Drive in Bettendorf. And I just have a couple concerns, I have nothing prepared. If they do put in a stormwater retention pond, the question is, who is going to be responsible for maintaining that? I have heard that in other situations within this area, retention ponds have been built, and the builders have left the site and wiped their hands of it, and then the detention ponds just basically come, an overgrown swamp that don't really serve or work the way that they were designed to do. On a personal note, I just moved over to Iowa about three and a half years ago. It took us forever, from Illinois, took us forever to find a place. The reason why we chose where we did is because we have an, almost an acre lot in the middle of town, we don't have neighbors next to us, and we have a wooded ravine behind us. It's like we're living in the country in the middle of the city. It is about a quality of life issue for the people that live in this area, and I hope that that's taken into concern. I realize that we need tax dollars and what have you, I just don't know that that's the appropriate place to put in a new subdivision. And if the decision is made to put in that subdivision, I have concerns regarding the entrance in on Lincoln Drive or whatever it is. That will be a serious safety concern, that there's a traffic jam there, there are two ninety-degree turns right next to each other. If the subdivision does go through, I would suggest that the entrance to this new subdivision be on Kimberly Road instead of right there. And then, as other people have asked, twenty-six homes in five acres, that doesn't even surround, that doesn't go with the neighborhood area. If you're going to put something in there, let it match the surrounding area, give people space if you let it go through. Of course, I would prefer to have the wildlife in the, but if you have to make it go through, consider all the quality of life for the people that are surrounding the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item?
Hi. My name's Joanna Dorder. I live at twenty-one River View Park Drive in Bettendorf. I just want to add another concern regarding pedestrian traffic in that Lincoln Road area. If I'm remembering correctly, the sidewalks end at some point in there at that corner house, and because now there's no school for a lot of kids to walk to, they walk across Kimberly Road right there via Lincoln Road, and there's no sidewalk there for them to walk around that curve, so that causes kids to have to walk across the street on Middle Road and then across Kimberly Road up near like, like Bruegers and Dunn Brothers to cross right over there. There's a, a little kind of side crosswalk anyways. So my concern would just be, what are we gonna do to address those pedestrian traffic issues, especially with more vehicle traffic, additional crosswalks, or, because I don't believe there's a crosswalk at that corner right now. It's up a little bit, up a little ways. So, thank you.
Thanks, Joanna. Anyone else?
Ray Young on five oh eight River Drive.
Ray.
It's probably a good thing y'all are sitting down for this next comment, but I would like to comment on the noise and traffic in River Drive. For some reason, the motorcycles have quieted down, the speed seems to be going down. I don't know if it's Chief Kimball or what, but something good has happened.
We're just gonna let him take the credit.
All right, that's fine.
The way to go, chief!
Probably deserves it, but-
All right.
Second comment, the trash thing. I don't understand, you put out a calendar, it says no trash pickup on Monday, and I'm sitting here and saying, wife says put the trash out. I says, no, no, it's a holiday. She says, oh, well, there goes the trash truck. Just so we could do it all again today, I'm sure there's some expense involved in that.
Perfect, we're not, Ray. We made a mistake.
Third comment, I don't really have a dog in the fight over this development, I just kind of heard about it. But I will say, I've been coming to these meetings for several years. This is the most number of people I've seen talking against development. My only comment would be, and I would think would be the question for everything that comes up in front of the council, is what benefit to the residents of Bettendorf will this do? Conversely, what harm to the residents of Bettendorf will this do? And for the thoughts that are brought up, I would- And for the thoughts that are brought up, I would think a cost-benefit analysis of putting in the infrastructure for this place, and see what the payback is to the city for what they're putting, what money they're putting into it. And that's my two cents worth.
Thanks, Ray. Good to see you. Anybody else wish to be heard on public requests of council this evening? Okay, we're going to close public requests of council. We'll move to our first public hearing. Yes?
Can I just make?
Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a comment, it's not totally addressing the Dolan thing, but, and you guys know where I come from with the multifamily, as far as how much I've hurt probably the last two years, but I'm wondering if we can't relook quickly, in whatever manner, at maybe amendments of the land use plan, or look at the key areas that are undeveloped right now? And I know Bill's having a heart attack right now.
Because we've done this twice?
Yep. But I'm concerned about, concerned about the multifamily. We looked at the green space, you know, before, had a workshop on it, but I think we need to do some more work. I think some stuff, initiatives we took solved part of the problem, but not all the problem. But I think density's been an issue. We talked about the green space. Alderman Adamson, you know, has been so involved and outspoken on the stormwater. And I think we really need to do this sooner than later, but look at the drainage ways and how close, you know, developers are building to those. And with that, like, the development, he was referring to the infill that's being brought in, you know, as far as how that's affecting erosion and that type of thing. I don't know if we could do that sooner than later, because, you know, we know we've got a development coming that all of this stuff is going to be affecting.
Well, this one will be in the hopper before we can make any changes, because we won't be able to retroactively, oh, sorry about that, affect it. But if Brian or Mark wants to touch on, I know we've talked about some, you've been working on some changes based upon our workshop to bring forward, a change in the ordinance relative to green space and density, or at least have a discussion on that topic again. How close are we? What's your comfort level? What kinds of, what are your thoughts based upon what Councilmember Brown just raised? Your Honor, I can probably take this. Okay, Mr. Plain's going to take it right off your plate. Mr. Plain?
Thank you, Your Honor. We've talked about changes to the subdivision ordinance, and we had planned to put that on the second meeting in July, on the 19th, to have a discussion at least on the changes that we would be recommending. As you know, that included changes in the right-of-way, changes in the size of cul-de-sacs, changes in the four-to-five-foot sidewalk amendment. And we made changes already once, actually twice, per the council's consideration after the McNamara subdivision, if I could use that phrase.
You can.
And you have talked about the potential change to green space. So, we were bringing those forward for your consideration. This application, to your point, Your Honor, is already in the planning zoning hopper. I'm not our attorney, so I'd let Chris overrule me if he chooses to do so. But this is in the development review process. Anything that you would do with the subdivision ordinance after our discussion on the 19th, I don't believe would be affected by any applicant that was currently in the queue.
I already said I don't think it would, but let's talk to our lawyer.
Well, there's two lawyers here, so I, I defer.
I concur with both of you.
Well, thank God we're right for once.
So, we had, we had planned to make those changes that you talked about, probably in the last six months, and there's a number of those. And we had that ready for discussion at our next meeting. It would not, again, for the folks in the audience, it would not affect this development, because this development is in the queue by virtue of its application. And the council certainly could direct us to change, or consider a change, in the land use plan. As you all know, that would require a pretty lengthy process to redo the land use plan, then reconsider that matter. We're probably talking a minimum of three months, and I would dare say more than that, because you'd have to have public hearing processes to change all that land use plan, just like we did when we did this several years ago. And remember, we had five or so public meetings to take input on all of those issues, and you would be bound by code to do that again, if you want to change that land use plan. So, it's not a, this is not something that is going to be quick, and we're wanting to be clear about that. The subdivision ordinance, you can change the ordinance, because it falls within the parameter of what you've adopted in the land use plan and the comprehensive plan already. But to go in and change the land use plan, change the comp plan, is a very tedious and long process. So, I wasn't trying to...
No, we understand.
I just wanted to give you an update on where you asked us to go with the subdivision ordinance.
Okay, and on the land use plan, you're saying to look at the whole thing, but I guess, I guess we have to look at the whole thing to look at those specific parcels that are undeveloped right now?
Well, you can take a look at that plan as it is now, adopted by council, and then we might have answers to the questions you have. But if we wanted to modify that plan, or revise that plan, then we go through that procedure that we did two years ago. Is it now three, Bill, when you were heading to charge to get that done? Four? It feels like only yesterday!
And, four, and that process took us?
A year, over a year.
Sixteen, almost 18 months.
Yeah. Year and a half, yeah. So, but, that's not to say that we don't revisit that, if that's council's preference. It's just to say, know that that process is a different one than the subdivision, and maybe at the next hearing, or when we bring this forth, we can talk through what those plans are, how we, you know, just that refresh your course.
Yep, I think that's a good idea. And just, and we do have a public hearing for the next meeting on the subdivision changes. So, that is coming to the next, to the next meeting, on those subdivision ordinance changes relating to sidewalk widths and those sorts of things that we've talked about before.
And those have all been vetted with home builders and everybody, and it's time to bring them forward, right?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay.
Okay, so if, then just as we have informal agreements, if we can look at that land use, especially, you know, the multifamily, so, and then all those items, the green space, the drainage, infill, and all that, you know is going to be coming up with the Dolan development. So, just, you know, those are concerns, especially for me, and I think for some others.
Yep, I can...
Anyway.
The question would, will be, Your Honor. Go ahead, Mark, I'm sorry.
I think I can answer part of the question with the green space, the interior green space, the density. Those will all be addressed in our upcoming zoning ordinance update that we're working on. Remember, at the same time we did our comprehensive plan, we also, almost in tandem, did a zoning ordinance. It's probably time to, I think our comp plan, our zoning ordinance are actually very well-done. Like any tool, probably sharpened up a little bit, and I think we're going to do that with what we are. We're under contract right now with MSA Professional Services. That contract started on July 1. I would expect in six to nine months to be able to deliver to you, at least in draft form, an updated zoning ordinance that addresses some of your concerns relative to green space, and then just some other kind of finer points we need to flesh out as well.
Okay, great.
Perfect, thank you. You bet. Are we ready to move forward to our public hearing? Okay. Let's move to our public hearing. Michelle, this is a public hearing with regard to the Crow Creek Park Quarry parking lot reconstruction project. Brian, a couple sentences, I think we know if anybody's driven down there, it's time.
Yes, Your Honor. This project consists of reconstructing the access drive and parking areas down near the quarry in Crow Creek Park.
Thank you, sir. All right, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Let's open the public hearing with regard to the quarry parking lot. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Let's move to the resolution for Councilmember Brown, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plan specifications in form of contract for the Crow Creek Park Quarry Parking Lot Project. I move approval of this resolution.
Second. Any discussion on this item? Yes, Councilmember Saxer.
Thank you, Your Honor. How much use does this quarry get?
Actually, quite a bit.
Quite a bit. You'd be surprised how busy it is.
Very busy. There's a lot of people who actually use the quarry itself. There's kayaks down there and what have you, and then there's also, just to the south of there is an area where there's a lot of people who park there and get graduation pictures and wedding pictures, and it's also a direct access to the bike path that, you know, traverses all the way over to Middle Road.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I think Jerry's just remembering back when we were young, and it was illegal to even go back there. Now, it's a pretty popular place.
Don't point at me. I never got caught back there.
You what, Scott?
All right, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Thank you. We have unanimously passed the Crow Creek Park Quarry Parking Lot Reconstruction Project. On to a second reading for Councilmember Webster, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a second reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf, Iowa zone map for Lot 6, Betplex 2nd Edition, which is generally located northwest of the intersection of Competition Drive and Middle Road, C7 Regional Entertainment District to C3 General Business District. I move approval of the ordinance at its second reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Other than to thank the developers and the folks who are moving that project forward, I have none. Let's move to a roll call vote, please.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Fantastic. We have unanimously passed that rezoning to allow some more investment to happen at the Betplex. On to another second reading. This is for Councilmember Connors, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the second reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Section 6-1-131, no parking zones enumerated, by adding a no parking zone on International Drive at Forest Grove Drive, and a no parking zone on 26th Street north of Central Avenue. I move approval of the ordinance at its second reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Second reading. Already been through committee of the whole and our first reading. Seeing none, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
We have unanimously passed the no parking zones enumerated on 26th Street. Let's move to our last second reading of the evening. This is on speed restrictions for Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a second reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Section 6-1-285, speed restrictions, by adding a school speed zone on Forest Grove Drive. I move approval of the ordinance at second reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Obviously, we have school zones everywhere. Councilmember Adamson.
Are we going to add the lights of the?
I think they're there.
The electronic speeds?
Yes, sir.
They'll be out there. Thank you, Your Honor.
You betcha. Yeah, we're going to treat them the same as we do the others.
I just didn't know if it was going to get budgeted until next.
We'll get them out, Your Honor. Yes, Councilmember Baden.
Just to ask the chief, is there, is there any merit to maybe, I'm not sure how long that speed zone is going to be, but with that new entrance to the park and the crossing from the subdivision across the street, having that school zone start prior to the entrance into the park?
I will probably defer that to Brent Morlock, our traffic engineer, because he would probably be the best one to know what you can do in regards to that, and, you know, what the allowances are. But I'll definitely, I can bring that up to him for sure.
Thank you.
Go ahead. It looks like we have a couple of you ready to chime in. Is Brent maybe not with us?
Yeah, I was just going to chime in. We have to follow the manual for uniform traffic control devices that actually have set standards based off of federal guidelines and whatnot, but there is always some leeway in that through a school zone corridor. So, we'll take a look at that and see if there's any opportunity to expand those areas if needed.
Thank you.
All right, we're done with that one, and unanimously passed. Let's move to the ordinance for third and final reading.
I need to call them.
Oh, do we, didn't get a vote? Go ahead and call the roll.
We did not, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Now, we're done with the unanimous vote. Let's move to an ordinance for Councilmember Saxer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Section 8-2-6-D, by updating billing practices for the stormwater utility, sewer utility, and solid waste enterprise activities of the city. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Third and final time. Michelle, please, call the roll.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.